I spend a lot of my time.
All right. It's about five after. We're gonna call the meeting. So Kathy is here, but she's leaving. Kathy, before you leave, do you want to discuss anything on the agenda? We have the approval of minutes. We have all the business, the calendar for next week. Recycling starts next week. Joey's Trail maintenance update.
Oh, yes, I didn't know that was not about that. And when I run the trail, yes, because it's kind of getting overgrown, I think maybe getting more mulch out there.
Yeah.
Getting more mulch out there and then making it work, probably to spread it because that's very expensive. And there's a pile of weed stuff that we have to put through. And that actually is the oil mulch pile, so maybe if the term food could get in there and dispose it.
We will add that to the new.
Yeah. It's uncertain. It certainly doesn't exactly get in the way of their long run. And it's, that's other.
Because you can't have mulch?
No, it's not mulch, it's probably, probably mulch.
Exactly.
It's probably just spread out. There's still a little bit of mulch. You walk around, yeah. Well, whatever. You can make sure I'm going to do that file, so.
And so that big pile, oh, yeah, it will dirt.
Yeah, and that was traditionally a mulch pile.
Yeah, they, they got rid of some of it, I think, because it was like this.
Yeah, we should just get rid of it. It kind of blocks the, and it blocks the long run.
First and foremost, we have a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting on August 11th.
I will make a motion.
Seconded by Kathy. All in favor of approving minutes? Aye. Anybody opposed? Any conversation? No? All right, minutes are approved. So the additions to the agenda are gonna be some maintenance items for Joey's Trail. Everything else we need to talk about this year. So eight o'clock's gonna be here before we know it, so let's go dig right in. Any public comment before we start?
Yes, I am a public and I have a comment. Comment. I wanted to talk a little bit about the Alan's Trail Walk. So we had set Saturday, October 24th, as our date. I still think that's a good day with Sunday as the rain date. I was wondering if anybody would be interested in pushing it to Friday, easily, because Saturday.
Means Saturday, Friday, September 24th.
Yes.
From Friday, from Saturday to 25th.
Okay, yeah. It would be from 6:30 to about 7:30.
Do you think any?
Well, the only thing to really consider is, my hope is that we can have it pretty much set up ahead of time. So that there's no setup that day too much anyway, other than like turning on the lights and the bells and the babbish and stuff like that. The reason I, I suggest that change, and it's not, it's not, we have to be. I know that the Gleep House is doing their haunted Gleep House and Cemetery Tour over at Fort Gary.
On the Saturday?
On Saturday.
Okay. Would any, who would be able to volunteer on the 24th? That's the only question. Yes. Would you be able, are you around on the 24th?
Yeah.
Okay. Erin, any comments?
It's fine.
It would be from, it would start at 6:30 and go until about 7:30. Last year, we did it from 6:00 to 8:00.
You said the 24th?
The Friday, the 22nd.
Friday to 24th. Oh, we're looking at October. Hold on, she's right, 22nd.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, she's right. I would definitely go for that because I might have to stop somebody on 22nd.
22nd, okay.
All right, 20, let's, we're re-changing that. The suggestion was made by the public to move the story walk from Saturday the 23rd to Friday the 22nd. Before we go into a motion, can I have, just, are we still able to volunteer on that day?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Yeah, it's kind of far from. We're just finalizing. We're gonna have to find, we were gonna have to vote to finalize the schedule. Yeah.
I mean, you can also kind of recoup other volunteer.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we're gonna need a, we're gonna need a lot of volunteers. And I'll ask the friends and the library board, I'll, I'll, I'm gonna volunteer. So it would start at 6:30, that's set around 6-ish, so it should be fairly around like 6:30. And last year, we did it from 6 to 8, so we had a bunch of kids showing up at 6, and then by like 7 o'clock, it was pretty much over. So that's why I think like the 7:30-ish, and how everyone's kind of done. So it doesn't need to be long.
So 6:30?
6:30.
How much setup time do you think, Dini?
That depends on volunteers. So I had an idea. So, so my Saturday would be the rain date. So this book, there's some pictures from it. The little old lady swallowed a bat, and what I think would be fun is if a couple of our volunteers, so it's like little lady swallowed flies, that's the Halloween stuff, so there's like a goblin and there's like ghosts and the wizard. It would help our setup. It would be a lot easier if for some of the stuff, like the wizard and the ghost and the little old lady, if we can have somebody dressed up as those things to be on the trail. And like not jump out, but just like, the ghost would be pretty easy, because that, that's like literally a white sheet. If anyone's got a wizard costume, they might go to find one for pretty cheap on Amazon.
Put that in the minutes.
My husband has a wizard costume, but it's more of like a, like a druid, not quite the fun wizard. So I, I think that would be, that would be effective, and it would also cut out some preparation, which would be nice. And then there's a goblin, which is kind of gonna be like our, our most Halloween, our most popular thing. So, does anybody have any woodworking suit, or like good at making a big thing?
Like what?
I was thinking of making a big cutout of the goblin to put on the trail. Because it'd be hard to dress somebody up.
Yeah, I have to buy it. Maybe I'll just talk to my backyard, see if we can get it together.
Yeah, if someone's got like a.
Six of?
Yeah, that can cut kind of a goblin-ish shape.
My husband has everything, which I would probably in there.
Okay.
I can bring, I just don't have to bring a toilet.
How about one of those cutouts, like? So do the goblins, but have it be so that there's a face cutout?
I love it.
That's very nice.
Actually, and I think this might be a great opportunity to reach out to Billy's there, see if he, uh, might help, be able to help with the population, yeah.
I like that. That's excellent. That would be fun.
I'll send them a message right now.
Other things in regards to that, does the Conservation Commission have any extra funding for more light candy?
Yeah.
Things like that? Do you guys want to buy that stuff, or do you want me to and submit for reimbursement?
Yeah, I think that's something, but we have to vote on a budget for it.
Tell me how much money just spent.
Well, that's true, then we can free up it.
You did, yeah. I don't, I don't know if I necessarily, I mean, I could.
But we can set a limit.
And how about?
Give me 300. Yeah, that would be amazing. As the entry, I like to do an exit, too. It'd be nice to have an exit. Yeah, so I would definitely, I could definitely spend some time to make.
Do you have stuff worth doing, honey?
I do, yeah. So I've got some light, I've got a block.
So we're gonna make a motion right now. All right, I make a motion to...
Did I say a limit?
Yeah, we said, so you said a limit, 300 dollars. Make a motion to reimburse Teresa for the, uh, for the purchases, for the story walk, not to exceed 300 dollars. Any, uh, any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Pass. You nam, you nam in the sleep.
Gotcha, okay. Um, a couple other things with that.
You need your seat, so that's.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I would need it from the library anyway, so, yeah. A couple other things. We need generators that we screen. I forget where Ron got some from that year. Can I ask?
Sure, absolutely. Ron would, I think Ron, Ron would give me, she'd probably.
Yeah.
Be happy to volunteer.
Does anybody, does anybody have a small generator that they'd be going to borrow?
I can probably get one.
More extension cords are always good, too. I have a bunch now, thanks to Trudy. Um, I think you might have taken it back. I went to Trudy's house and I bought all her.
And when is that? Supportable gen, you would need that the day of, right?
Day before, if you don't mind, it's not terrible weather, if you don't mind us being here.
I have that, I have that, I have this 100 with 10 units.
Yeah.
It's like so heavy, it's hard to pick up.
I remember.
I can bring that.
Yeah, that would be good. Yeah, so it would be, it would be good on like Thursday. Wednesday, Thursday's terrible, to kind of put the generators out, lay out the, um, extension cord for the light, and kind of have it ready to get plugged in.
Does library have a backdrop?
What?
Like a backdrop? You know, for like a photo booth kind of thing?
I have something, actually, yeah. It doesn't have, it doesn't have anything on it right now, but if we put like a cloth on it and stuff.
No, no, I have other stuff to hang something, but if you actually had an actual backdrop that said Rockberry Library.
Oh, no, darn it.
Yes. That might be a good thing.
Yeah.
So then I can ask a local photographer I happen to be married to, if she will set up shop. Like a souvenir, and then we can have a website where people can.
We've got a little, I know, it would be better to have a digital one, but if you wanted to do both, I have a little door there, too.
Well, this will drive traffic. In order to.
Yeah.
Select the picture, they would have to actually go someplace.
Okay.
All right.
Well, I'll take a picture of what I have, and what I can turn into a backdrop.
All right.
We don't, yeah, so we would need to do the setup on Thursday.
Okay. Weather permitting?
Yeah.
What's the backup if the weather's not permitting?
Wednesday. Set it up for.
How, so, no, if the weather's not gonna be good on Friday?
Saturday.
Saturday. There's no indoor, can't, there's no indoor, okay?
Saturday's terrible, that's true. So.
I can probably go pick it up in the afternoon.
Okay, yeah, so like Thursday, afternoon, evening, if you guys could. You know, hopefully all the poison and, wear boots. And I think that's about it. So I'll, I'll copy all of you on a scale, ask if there are volunteers.
Yeah, that's weird.
Yeah. It could all be a lot of time, and I would be interested in seeing what's been realized.
Sure.
Okay. And I still have to do that. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Okay.
So there's any, uh, getting back onto the agenda here. Did anyone reach back out in regards to volunteering to do woodworking? I know one guy did. Uh, yeah. All right, so we just need to do another blast to see if Barbara can do that blast for us?
I, yeah, I asked a couple of people. I got a lead. One person I asked. Mark Oliver, he had just sold his, sold his.
Oh, no.
I thought I'm Michael Boyd, but did you hear about Michael Boyd?
Yes.
Got in a very serious car accident. His fault. He hit a truck. And the guy that driving the truck died of a heart attack. Now he's, and he, Michael fractured his pelvis. It's a mess. He's getting sued, and so he's at it. But, um, Paul, Paul was just, she suggested I get in touch with, um, I guess Jim Conway's nephew assistant, or is any brothers involved in some woodworking thing? And he's a selectman, so I mean, yeah, so he, maybe he could, he'd be a good source. And she was gonna, by the, she never did, she was gonna send, she said, I'll talk to Mark, and Mark knows a bunch of people in town, we'll send you an email. I'll send you an email of people who've had some, had some woodworking skills. All right.
Is it like out of the question to to purchase a few and have people like?
Well, the thing at this point. Well, the thing at this point is we have to also figure out, are we still gonna do this with the, are we gonna do this as a finale for the project parade? Because that's coming.
Are they missing the?
I'm not sure how much enthusiasm that has, and we have, we have a talk.
Yeah, I don't want it.
Okay, she said, I, I, you know, I talked to somebody about it, and, and I thought last week you couldn't paint them? And someone told me, no, you have to paint them, I mean, they have to be repotable in color to be regional in your country, wherever you are. Yeah, because that's what I mean, somebody who knows about this stuff. Yeah, so, and, and then they have to be mounted and such quick, so it's like, he gets beyond my knowledge here.
It might make sense to actually, you know, not have the cart for the horse. Physically have the talk and then the bat house.
Maybe we can get people to sign up for one, and then we'll get you a bat house. That kind of thing, we could make one. I don't think that's hard to make, and by the way, I think you can get plans online.
Yeah, there are.
And that's probably easier than taking one we had, disassembling. And then trying to replicate that one. I mean, the ones, the ones that we bought are, they're really nice. Did you know how much they, I didn't, I was gonna try to figure out how much they were.
She says here, she, she can, we can, whether they apply, we can, you know. Yeah. But if, but if you are thinking, you don't have it quite finalized, something you know, to do the rather than later, because I have to do the.
Yeah, I think it's one of the general.
They're from 17 to 40 bucks.
17?
They're down as little as 17.
17, so.
Yeah, and then the more expensive ones are 24 and 40.
What, what, the ones we got?
I don't know.
I don't know. I mean, we.
I'm sure we paid 20 bucks.
For 20 bucks? You get 10 of 200 bucks.
What depends on.
I bought one, it was a four, it was a four-chamber bat house, black, because of where we live, the doors were pitch. It can't mount it on a tree, because the owl can outtree, and they come out of their little house, and the owl can, and eat them. So it should be like on a building.
I love that.
Or a hole, a little hole.
I see them with mice like this.
This is the tractor, this is pretty.
Take them out, and throw it in the yard.
So the only thing we need is, is we need to corral the, the Boy Scouts to make it, to give us a mass amount of kids. Right? We need like 10 kids, or else it doesn't really make it sense.
10, 10, 10 kids to, uh, like 10 families to make a bat house. Oh, yeah, yeah, the Boy Scouts would be perfect.
When she left us, to get those, maybe we just might step up to, you know. Get those, get them, get them up to the bat house, it's an absolute robot.
And she might have a connection to buy them both.
Yeah, and then, uh, maybe we use, like, flyers, flyers, and all the materials. And they used to go home with parents, and parents would see it.
And then we can talk to the, to the Boy Scouts, too, about, you know, we'll talk to.
Jesus, yeah.
Get the kids, and the kids would test the parents.
All right, so, let's start with the first week, the after the tractor parade on the October, the, is it the second or the third, Saturday or something? I thought it was the third.
The tractor parade, you do have.
Then it's the third. So we'll, we'll reach out to those couple of woodworkers to see if they want to take on the challenge, and they have the time. If not, I make a motion that we set a budget of not to exceed 250 bucks to buy bulk bat houses or bat house kits. That was an official motion, doesn't do anything unless somebody says.
Um, I, I will, I will make a motion to approve that initiative. You, you made it, I made a motion, you're.
I will second that. Tony will second it. Any conversation? All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? No, passed. All right, so we got a backup. So that's the first weekend. The second weekend is the ninth and the 10th. Um, we don't have to do something every weekend. For the first, I was thinking about this, and maybe if we focus on the talk. That, and then the walk on the 22nd, and then you have the truck or treat on the 30th.
31st.
31st.
On Halloween.
So, and then all the rest of our efforts can be to support the truck or treat on the 31st.
I'll have to dress up like that, every single one of you.
All right. So I make a motion. 7:32, you got that back.
I know.
This is recorded.
I could do that, it's scary.
So we got the, uh, we're gonna skip over the ninth and 10th. What were we gonna do that day?
Uh, that was the, oh, that's what I was gonna, uh, the interpretive hype with John at Land Hill.
We have the interpretive hype, we're not skipping the ninth and 10th, but the interpretive hype with, with John. Officially for the minutes, on the ninth and the 10th, the 16th and the 17th, we have our talk, our bat talk with. For the minutes.
And she, she knows all about that.
The story walk, and then the truck or treat, so we will be doing everything, every weekend.
Funtober.
And funtober, fundactober.
Is there any someone who wants to make?
For the hype, and that's on the ninth and 10th.
Right. I'm telling you, Michael, it's just earlier rather than here. You guys can do it there.
I need to go to a wedding at three, so.
Earlier the better.
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM? 9:00 AM gone once, 9:00 AM gone twice.
I get forced my.
Late.
Really for me.
9:00 AM it is. All right.
It's giant.
Clarify for the talk, if you guys want to do it here at the library on that Saturday, we are requiring maps inside, that's okay?
Um, what, sorry, Mr.?
We're requiring maps inside the library.
Okay. Oh, good.
We can look on the back to drop it.
Nah, come on, bring him in. Deal with the mosquitoes.
Um, I can introduce you to, she asked, she asked if, um, there was, uh, I don't know, maybe thirty percent, there was like, uh, maybe something available, maybe there are. I can go be there. I will show you how it works. Um, because I can't be here, so the most I can do is have somebody here to open up.
What time was it? What time?
Uh, I was gonna ask, what time, and I was gonna.
Is that gonna be a Zoom thing, too, to be?
Uh, yeah, I could ask, um, um, Julie, if you can, how's Zoom, with all these smiles. Oh, one thing to consider. That is the day of, um, the dark district. The tour, that's right.
You better remember it, yeah.
But, don't walk in here, nobody else. And the four. But then, like, I feel like if you're doing the tour. Yeah, are you really, yeah, I would, I would.
We're getting past here, I mean, it's.
Or. Yeah. On Friday, Friday evening.
I was gonna keep them Friday evening.
Still Friday evening, I'm figuring out.
I think so, maybe it's better.
About it?
But I don't, I don't like eating these things, you know?
Someone has to dance the bat two feet.
I nominate, Tony. Anyway, there is second, the second for nominating.
She does, because she said that in education process, so.
It's something, like it's somewhere near the wheel.
So are you making a motion to the, true?
Yes, I will make a motion, yeah, I will make a motion that we include one of the, one of the, one of the, for sure on that, for that.
What second?
22nd, so, all, any conversation? All in favor?
One, should it come out of the wean? It's been, I mean, that's what we did, we're spending the money in wean.
Well, we just have to look at the budget and see where appropriated.
Well, the point is, you could take it out of the budget, but the wean grant is targeted for certain things, so.
Yeah, whenever we have educate, that, that expense would always be focused for education. I don't think we have to, in the motion, probably don't have to make it. We just have to account for it and register. All right, so.
Who's gonna, when these things come due, I, in the past, I've been doing this stuff with Kim. Um, do you want me to still do it, or?
Yeah.
I mean, I have a problem, I, I know Kim, so, I can send her the invoices, make sure.
And if any, if, if you can't do it, I can do it.
Okay.
So.
I'll copy, I'll copy you on that. I'll copy you.
All right, so that is, we spent a lot of money this. Yeah.
A lot of money?
Well, we don't know if November is gonna be shut down again.
I know.
All right, so, next question I have for you. We're good on this, you. That will back to the weekend of the 22nd. Um, would anybody opposed to me reaching out to the Masons and Woodbury, which cover Roxbury, to see if they would like to volunteer?
For the store walk?
Yeah.
Yeah, more, more help is better, especially with the setup.
These guys love to do stuff like.
And making that one to cut out.
Sure.
Or making curtain entryway. I got some jobs.
I'll actually. Uh, we are doing a store walk behind Roxbury Library. We volunteer.
Boy Scouts, because that's Boy Scouts.
Yeah, I think the Boy Scouts should be on.
Some of the old.
I don't, I don't necessarily want teenagers.
Okay.
On the trail.
I got you.
If I put them in a costume and I put them in the dark woods, they're gonna feel a little bothered.
Alright, so on the thirty first, we have conquer treat. We will volunteer or set up a booth or back of trunk in some sort with batting stuff. Um, but we have a meeting between now and then. We can talk about that. Alright. Let's. Alright. So that's the calendar for Bat Fest. Nice. A five G bill will be tabled until we have the appropriate people to speak on it. Five G is like the name.
My chief.
Okay. She, there's concern that five G is dangerous. And so there was some opposition in town regarding five G coming into town. Um.
There was legislation that's been discussed in the past. Jessica was gonna tell us about it and she's not here.
Yeah. So again, we, we, last time I talked to Jessica, we explained that when she's here, people want to speak to it. None of us are educated enough on it that uh.
If you, if you, you cannot, if you go on the internet, you just, you're not, you're gonna get. Everybody's got an antenna.
Yeah.
Five G thing. And you're gonna get stuff from the power, from the telephone companies. And then you're gonna get people who flat earth people and anti vaxxers. So you, there's no like objective analysis.
Yeah. Well, it's, yeah, I'm gonna leave that out of the conversation of the uh, conservation committee. We'll uh, we'll go back and just, you know, our focus is pretty much on, okay, does it affect bees, does it affect the the me, the bird environment? Um.
Well, I, I think there's, there's concerns about health risk.
Yep.
I think it's a, one of those things, I think it's gonna boil down to there's a benefit and there's a risk. Does the risk justify the benefit?
Right.
Uh. I think that's what we're boiled down to. So it's trying to get an assessment of what's the risk of bringing five G.
But one, I was.
Well, five G is much shorter wavelength, but much stronger. And there's, there's talk that some of that could be very dangerous.
But isn't it like exponentially different?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, by speed wise.
Well, I don't see why. Yeah, but I mean, in terms of like the waves and all that.
We don't know. It's big, like, you don't.
And the other thing is it's fairly inexpensive for them to like, put it up. Like put up ten of them versus one four G tower.
And there are less expensive ways to bring high speed in there, or more expensive ways to bring high speed, like fiber optic.
Yeah.
Right, so, you know, that, that's kind of spend the money because it is spending the money to do that.
Oh, yes, I just had.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah.
Yeah, pass those along.
Yeah.
And then if, if this is a big enough thing, then we can find a speaker and bring him in and and talk about it, but we'd always. We'd always want to uh, make sure that speaker is being objective and being scientific and they're gonna have, they're gonna. So the next piece is recycling in town. That's great news that recycling in town is starting this weekend, right?
Uh, the eleventh, I thought I read in Barbara Henry's email.
And Saturday.
But, well, recycling of the.
Five cent.
Five cent thing, yeah. I've been saving a lot.
Yeah, so that's awesome. Um, and that we can go ahead and and uh, benefit the fuel bank again. So that's uh, that's pretty great. The good news of the last, the minutes and. Um. I don't think there's any help that we need and I don't think we really need to. Barbara's been doing a good job of.
I, I think that.
Publicizing it.
Right, it's our own plan.
Yeah. So Joey's Trail of Maintenance officially into the minutes, uh, as, as was brought up earlier by Kathy Massey and also by Aaron, that uh, the idea of having another workday to mulch the trail. Here's my big question. Do we want to try to do that before the twenty second? If we do, of October?
Oh, well, um, I don't, you're in the trap. There's a, there's a couple little um, things that pick up. And I think if you just have like snacks. Yeah, or like, you know, the tiny little leaves that, yeah, you know, I, I think it was covered when there was fresh mulch, but as it gets damp down. Um, they were there last year and I think you hear if anybody's getting any tails, so that's good. Um, but if somebody had like, like a whole spot all over the field, that things get kind of way down to ground level.
There's enough um, small branchy trees, like trees that would go through a good chipper that we could probably just mulch those trees, right? And just um, break it out.
I don't think there would be enough, there'd be a lot of trees, you know? I, I, I've had the experience of doing this and you'd be surprised how little mulch you get.
Out of a tree?
Yeah, I mean, and, and it seems like this big gigantic pile doesn't go very far.
Yeah.
Plus it's, it's expensive to get it out of a chipper.
Well, we'd have to try to get a guy with a chipper to volunteer in the day. Yeah.
Does, yeah, does the town have mulch?
Well, and again, my, my idea was to clean up some of the fallen trees and stuff that are ten feet in, they don't really need to be done, but would it be prettier if it was done? I think so. And there's, there's one tree that bothers me because it's just hanging out. You know, it's fallen, but it's fallen on another tree.
Yeah, um, that's.
Chainsaw now.
I, yeah, I, I don't mind coming with a chainsaw, but the idea is that if, if we have a chipper here, that can handle those like that, um, then we could just drop it in place, you know what I mean?
They're off the wood, right?
Well, yeah, if you had a chipper here, you haul out the wood and run it right through the chipper.
Yeah, it's fallen trees on the ground. But I'm talking about the tree that's leaning on another tree. Just waiting for the branch to fall.
If you knock, if you cut it down.
Russian tile, yeah. Well, then that's a different story.
Not uncut.
But you couldn't, I don't know if you can get a chipper in there to take it.
Yeah. Symphotics, these are, these are little details. The big, the big problem is the chipper. So we need to get the chipper. If there is one.
Good.
Yeah, cool.
Well, there, there's a lot of branches and stuff. There's that one area that looks like you can drag them up the branch.
If you just get, get a crew here with a chainsaw and just haul that stuff out, burn it. Well, I don't think burning, but you'd be.
Can have one of those.
My friends from Deep Rock.
The Pagan Botfire?
Have them hang out by the botfire.
Uh, it's not gonna burn. That might be fun if, if we can have a, another pub night. Pub night.
Well, we did do our winter golf there, so it was supposed to be Pagan games, the whole bit cut off.
Alright, so anyway, so we'll try to get mulch and a workday. We do have another meeting on uh, the thirteenth, which is the week before the twenty second. Uh, so maybe we could uh. Yeah, discuss it again then. But again, it doesn't hurt, uh, would benefit the, the walk, I think, just to make it freshen it up.
Yeah, you're gonna need a lot of mulch.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's possible without.
Yeah, it's possible without. It doesn't have to be perfect.
But I mean, I think with a lot, with enough people and a help, you can get down. I, I mulched. I mulched the periphery around my garden and I had the longest pile of mulch over the course of three days. It was gone. And I, and I used it all and it looked like I'm gonna mow something around. Where did it all go?
Alright, next one is town solar project update. So last night at the board of select meeting, selectmen's meeting, uh, the gentleman from Santa Energy presented to the selectmen. Um, hopefully the recording will be up on the, the website shortly because I know I wanna, I wanna watch it. Unfortunately, I missed it. But I did get some very good feedback. Uh, apparently there were a, a number of questions that were fielded very well by the, by, by William and Andrew from Santa. Um, there was a specific request made from the selectmen, um, which they are going to keep into consideration such as maybe not putting the uh, school because with the shared school, uh, just looking at Roxbury for this one so we can get something moving.
Okay.
Um. Uh, yeah, so they, they, they uh, signed a letter of intent to get a formal proposal from them to get additional information and that'll be presented at next month's board meeting, selectmen, board of selectmen's meeting. I suggest um, that we try to attend that if possible.
Yeah, that would be good.
Um, and.
You can zoom that.
Zoom, yeah. Uh, this may be our last in-person meeting according to the way some things are going, so. We're the uh, one of the last groups that have been doing this hybrid in-person, in-person meeting, um, so. Um, yeah, so that's kind of cool that uh, it's kind of cool. You know, I, I did have, I wanted to propose it.
It's a two page here. I did a little math and I did a little research. I, I had questions. One question, I wonder, I, I thought, I wonder if people are gonna reject the aesthetics of this thing on town halls. You know, part of town hall face, I think there will be some people who are gonna complain.
There's gonna be some people that complained that it's in the field in the middle of the wood.
Yeah, I, I, but they're gonna be people who complain that it's ugly when you're driving on.
I think it's part of the.
It could be, you know, part of the surface, but then you got this stuff on the roof. I'm just bragging that. I mean, you, you can't, I don't think you can just say, to hell with these people. I think you gotta realize there're gonna be some people.
Yeah, but that's not really our part. Our part was to say that if it was feasible to even have that.
But that's not a lot of.
Yeah, that, that was an extra. That wasn't a.
They could leave that off and it wouldn't cut down on the amount. Period. The other thing is it just seemed like the amount of energy that they were gonna get at. The mongers.
Well, that's going back to the grid, right?
Going back to the grid. And then I, I'd love to see a financial breakdown. How much money do they get? Which is how much money?
Well, the thing is, they spend a lot of money, so.
That's true, that's true, but it's.
Because we weren't able to.
I'm not saying, you know, I'm saying these are good, it would be good to have answers to these questions. It would be good to look at the state.
Yeah.
And rather than just say, oh, they're gonna make money. They do have to make money, but I'd like to see what the numbers are. I also think, um, is it legal to just give them the proposal? Won't you have to send this out? Don't get the N R A P together and get other.
Well, that wasn't a proposal. That was a feasibility study.
I know, but now they're gonna get a formal proposal.
I don't know if it's a formal proposal or formal information. I don't know what that is. Yeah, they're, they're, they're getting an idea of, of, of more real idea of whatever. More detail.
Okay.
So again, that, but that's out of, I'm gonna stop it because that's out of the realm of our committee. That's selectmen. That's not a third on there. So when they ex-nayed the, they didn't have it. So this is the thing, when they ex-nayed the school, when they ex-nayed some pogs because it would probably, you know, now we gotta get three towns, the masons from all three towns coming together.
Yeah.
Um, so they look, they're gonna look at booth, they're gonna look at our public building only. Yeah, for the first.
The libraries.
Libraries are one of that. Again, it's where it makes sense. The big thing at the transfer station was because that's where the big field was. It was how, how much it was gonna cost to transport the energy. Um, and that was a big problem because remember that's what we asked the Roxbury Land Trust.
Yeah.
That's the plan. That would've saved a lot of money and then made the town more money. However, because we couldn't cut through, now it's, it's good in a way for the town because we're gonna get an infrastructure improvement, right? We're gonna get three phases all the way up that road. Not very populated, so it's only gonna affect so many people. But again, it's something that would've cost the town money at some point. Uh, the, the next thing, which is, is new and I don't know enough about it, uh, but apparently battery storage is something else that's coming up. And there's the other, and the state's new budget, like the, the program. Um, local battery storage for solar, so for the places that it, what I, what I think it means is for places where it doesn't make sense to move the solar. Like through a three-stage, yeah, so um, that's exciting too and maybe that's what they'll do here, I don't know, but. Again, it's, let's show up on the second. Um, if we can, if we're ready to the information beforehand, um, I'll pass it out if I get it.
Um, yeah, please do.
Yeah. But again, a, at this point, the, the big thing is working the problem. The real problem, not again, stopping at every roadblock, but just seeing really what, what's good and what's not. Um, and we did our job, you know, we were tasked with the, with the job and it happened. So I consider that a, I mean. Alright. This is Roxbury Land Trust request. They still haven't, they never came back. So at this point, remove it from the agenda if it comes back. Um, this was, they were asking us to change our minutes. Um. Conversation went back and said, saying that we misrepresented what they said. And we said, um, well, this is what we said, which was in our minutes and was, that's how it was. And please, it's recorded, feel free to go listen to it. Um, and if you, after listening to it, if you feel that it's still wrong, come back to us, but we haven't heard anything back yet.
Who did you reach out to?
Uh, I forgot, whoever filed the complaint. Is it Ann?
Well, Ann is the uh, director. And I know it's Ross's director as well.
Then the Ross.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Who, who was?
Uh, Ann.
No, I know Ann.
No, uh, Ross.
So Ann.
Christopher?
Yeah, Ann sent a formal letter to myself and the uh, selectmen stating that they wanted the minutes corrected. And then Russ chimed in while I was writing and saying, hey, this is why we said this, the way we said this and we feel that it's correct and. They don't.
I didn't know that Russ is on the board of the.
Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, but he's.
He's second in line. No.
So why was he?
Because the board of selectmen were sent.
Oh, I see.
For Russ, Barbara and uh, yeah. Any other new business? Got three minutes, guys. Alright, so um, and I'm, one other thing I wanna bring up, the new business is we do need another alternate. Um, and potentially another board member. The one board member who just has, hasn't showed up in a while. I reached out to him. He was supposed to sign a letter of barra. But how does it happen?
Ross Pavana?
Yeah.
I don't know what's going on.
Do you know Ross?
Only, I only know him because I.
From um.
So he says, I know he's, I, I know that, I know that he's pretty friendly with Ron. I think they, they both have the hobby of flying the model airplane.
Yeah.
So we get together, prove him we do that, and then.
Well, yeah, I reached out to him, uh, told him, you know, we was looking for any support as a board member or as a volunteer. And he said he was very busy at this time. You know, we think about him and love Barbara now, so.
He's got an engineering background. He would be ideal for a solar thing.
Yeah. Perfect, yeah. That'd be great. And anybody else you could think of that would make an excellent board member or you're a volunteer, you're a friend of the conservation committee, but if you know anybody in town that might be interested.
Yeah.
You know? Alright. Alright, I think we did a lot of good stuff. Next. Alright, I think we did a lot of good stuff, next month is gonna be a lot of fun.
Yeah.
Um. So uh, with that, any suggestions for the uh, good of the order?
I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.